Good evening. We have a public hearing that will be followed by the City of Urbana Council Committee of the Whole, if we get two more council members here. And I think they're going to walk in the door. So let me call the public hearing to order. This is about public input on an ordinance amending the Urbana City Code, Chapter Three, Section 3-43, and this to increase the number of Class G2 liquor licenses for Lucky's Lounge, 2002 North Lincoln Avenue. Is there anyone who would like to testify at this hearing? Doesn't look like anybody wants to testify, so I will close. You want to say anything? Okay. I will close the hearing then. All right. Thank you.
Well, you guys arrived just in time.
Okay. I'm going to call this meeting of the Committee of the Whole to order with the clerk. Please call the roll.
Mr. Ammons.
Here.
Mr. Brown. Mr. Jacobson.
Here.
Mr. Madigan.
Here.
Ms. Marlin.
Here.
Mr. Roberts. Mr. Smythe.
Here.
Mayor Pressing.
Here.
We have a courtroom, just barely.
Charlie, could I reopen that hearing? I would like to read into the record that we have two people here. I didn't see these two.
Oh, okay, sorry.
Okay. Do you want to just pause?
Pause for a second.
I will reopen the public hearing on the liquor license, and I did have two people. I just didn't see that these were for the hearing. Normally, people speak. So there are two people. They didn't choose to speak, but they are in support of it. Shawn. Want to say how you pronounce your last name?
Framan.
Framan, okay. Shawn Framan and Cherz Shipman, is that correct? Okay. Chris. Chris Shipman. Okay, so we did have two people that did not want to speak, but are in support of it, so I am corrected on that. So I will reclose that hearing after correcting it. Thank you.
Okay. Okay, back to the committee meeting then. The -- we have the minutes of the June 13, 2016, meeting.
Move approval.
Is there a second?
Second.
Moved by Diane, seconded by Aaron. Eric.
It seems to me that Mr. Madigan is not mentioned as being either present, absent, or participating remotely, so he must be one of the three.
Oh, yes, in the elected officials officially present, physically present.
Was he here? I was absent because I was out of town.
Yes, he walked in a few minutes late.
Yes.
Yes. Okay, he is here, okay.
Yes, so we'll have to correct the minutes to recognize that Mike was here. Okay. With that correction, anything else? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes are approved. Okay, are there any additions to the agenda? Seeing none. Okay, next up is public input. We have a couple of items here. Bishop King James and Reverend Dr. Evelyn Underwood don't wish to speak at this time, but they are -- they continue to be concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer problems. Benjamin Stone would like to speak at this time. Mr. Stone.
My name is Benjamin Stone. I'm from -- I'm over on 701 Hawthorne Drive in Urbana. Mine's just a quick, basically me reading something at you. So I saw that we have extra Justice Assistant grant funds, and so immediately Chief Connolly and Lieutenant Searls have decided to lease some tasers with them. Not even buy, lease, which is always a sketchy thing to begin with. JAG funds can be used for many things, including drug treatment programs, prevention and education programs, technology improvement programs, and, more specifically, the body camera program that Connolly keeps saying would be too expensive. This money that he says he needs for starting a body cam program is right here, ready to be spent, but he's not interested. Urbana has discharged one taser in a year, and Lieutenant Searls' June 7 memo to Chief Connolly uses exaggerated language to make it sound like it was a terrible situation. It was a naked man on LSD with a pole. Only one officer has a taser, they say, as though a whole swarm of them were needed. Fortunately, the subject exited towards the officer with the taser. Fortunately, how? Was the only other option to shoot him? Was there no other thing? They needed a whole group of people surrounding him? They also make it, they almost explicitly, I don't have the thing in front of me, sound as though having more officers trained on tasers, which they do now, somehow necessitates getting more tasers, as though creating, I don't know, every time we train more people, we're going to get more tasers for everybody until everybody's got one on their side? Seems kind of contrary to what the whole testing out the tasers waters thing that was discussed previously is. Seems to go kind of against that. We already have tasers. They're barely being used, barely displayed and used once. I'm not really sure why we need to lease eight more of them when we have six that are barely being. We need more and better drug treatment programs. We need body cameras to increase transparency and to hold peace officers accountable for their actions, but also to back up their side of the story if they're asked to prove something, and they can say, "Look, here it is happening, right here, from my body camera." The Justice Assistant Grant text is very extensive. It details loads of things you can spend the money on. And tasers really, to me, sure as hell don't seem justified, not when there are so many other options there, and so many of them are things that have been brought to the council before as concerns. And the council members have all said, "Yes, we should look into this." The money's sitting there. We don't need more weapons. We need more safety, and we need more care for the people of Urbana. That's all I've got.
Questions for Mr. Stone. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, is there any additional public input? Okay, one more here. Eldress Melinda Carr continues to be concerned about the Dr. Ellis subdivision sewer issues and historic impact. Okay, next up is a quick presentation on my part on the noise ordinance. If Eric would take the chair and recognize me, I'll give the staff report essentially.
So, Mr. Smythe.
Thank you. This comes from beginning discussion issue that was raised by several constituents of Dennis's on what they consider religious music playing multiple times a day from the clock tower at the United Methodist Church. Mr. Simon and I, our city attorney, have gone back and forth on exactly what our noise ordinance says, and there's some ambiguity. Section 16.2 suggests that recorded music and such is not allowed from a list of different entities, yet in 16-4, we have a section that says that there's an exception for clock towers, bell towers, and carillions. And so rather than try to get into the discussion of whether it is, in fact, a violation of the noise ordinance, we'll just make it clear that clock towers, bell towers, and carillions are, when used for keeping time, used for timekeeping purposes or for calls to worship, which is what I think the intent was in Section 16-2. I did discuss this with Bill Brown in particular, and he would like to have additional, some additional time where it would be something like timekeeping purposes, calls to worship, and for special performances up to 15 minutes twice daily on national holidays. He wanted some leeway for performances outside of permitted, by permit type instances. So that's, this is my suggestion, my two suggestions here, depending on how we want to go. And then I was going to, depending on the consensus here, get started with some thinking, turn it over to staff to develop it some more, and fill in some holes. I did share some additional feedback I got from two constituents with Mr. Simon already. They wanted to make sure that, you know, how time, how timekeeping purposes are addressed. So, and I know that we have one person, so maybe you can call Mr. Anderson up.
Uh-huh. Okay, Mr. Anderson.
Good evening. I'm Steve Anderson. I'm the pastor of First United Methodist Church. I've been in Urbana almost a year now, and Mr. Brown and I have had several conversations via email about this matter. It's my understanding that around June 9, this issue began, and at that time, the system was not operating properly. It was playing more often than it was supposed to. It's currently set to play at 12:15, four songs, at 4:30 to 4:40, and that's Monday through Friday, and then 11:45 to 11:55 on Sunday morning. It doesn't play at all on Saturday, and it plays the Westminster Quarter for a couple of hours during the day, and I don't have specific times on that. I'm aware that there are two people that are disturbed by our chimes. I'm also aware that there are many, many people who enjoy them. We have one gentleman, who's a, all I know is he's a professor at the university. He comes at 4:30 on his bicycle, and he sits under the tree and stays there till the chimes are finished, and then leaves. I guess I'm very sorry that two people are disturbed by the chimes, but I guess it's also my concern that the concern of two people should not direct the choice and the privilege of many. I'm happy to answer any other questions if there are any.
Yes, sir. Laurel has.
So what kind of a schedule would you like?
I mean, this is what we're doing at the moment. If that's satisfactory, we'll be happy to stay with that. I'm sorry that it was malfunctioning and playing a couple of--
Okay, so this is less than what it was before.
Yes, it was playing five times a day.
And this would be twice a day.
This is twice a day, yes. And that's what we were doing for a long, long time, is my understanding. So for some reason, technology malfunctioned. I can't imagine--
I've never heard of any--
I've never heard of that. But, you know, we want to be good neighbors, but I think that we've done this for a long time, and I don't think that it's invasive and should disturb people the way it seems to a couple of people.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Reverend Anderson.
Yes, sir.
Actually, it's more than those two people. It's additional email from others in the neighborhood who are disturbed.
Okay, as far as I heard, it was one person, and then I heard a second person.
Yeah, there are two people came and spoke publicly.
From Mr. Brown.
Right. There are some additional individuals, so it's not just two.
Okay.
And so here's the issue that they're having, outside of special occasions and calls to worship, is that it's religious music, and they are of a different faith. And likewise, the other constituents are of yet another--
Yes, yes.
--religious leaning, and they, their issue is that it's proselytizing and in an amplified way. What's to stop, you know, the issue here becomes one of keeping up with the Joneses. If your church is doing it, what's to stop, what's not to, you know, another church, another church, another church? Or, and here's my hypothetical for you, the Church of Black Sabbath decides to play loud electronic music twice a day, or, you know, similar schedule to yours, and hence, that's why we have noise ordinances. You know, what's your answer to that? Those hypotheticals?
Yeah. I guess, I don't understand proselytizing very well because I don't do it, but it seems to me that chimes would not really present anything other than a melody. I don't know how it would present words or any kind of doctrine.
To quote from, to quote from the, or to paraphrase the woman who spoke here--
Yes.
--is that she knows those songs. She knows the words from her religious upbringing as a child. She finds them disturbing, and they intrude on her writing.
Mm-hmm, yes.
And so, and then they intrude on her and keep playing in her head as earworms.
Yes.
And so, again, you know, this is the issue with noise that goes beyond the immediate boundaries of the church or any other entity.
Yes.
And that's why we have a noise ordinance.
I understand.
Okay, I'll take over. I'm done talking, and I'll take over. Okay, Eric.
So just to comment, we're at 803 West Main. We're in the corner of Main and Bucie, and not very loud, but your chimes are audible there.
Okay.
And my wife, who also has a Methodist background, characterized them as, what did she say? Songs associated with evangelism.
Hmm. See, I honestly haven't heard them, so I don't know what's playing. So, you know, and that's something we can do. We can try to bring, you know, pull those out and put some in that are a little more pluralistic, maybe?
So I'm thinking that, I mean, I think, you know, noise ordinances, and, I mean, everybody's, everybody's noise spills over sometimes.
Oh, of course.
And the right way to settle that, if it possibly could be, is for people to, you know, understand as fully as possible--
Sure.
--you know, and then make each make allowances for the other. So I hope that a way can be, a way could be figured out--
I hope so, too.
--for this.
Yeah. Yes.
Just a technical question. Do you have the ability to change the volume of the chimes? And as I understand it, you're saying you can change out the music as well?
I honestly don't work with this. We have someone else in our congregation that works directly with it. I assume that there's a way to change the volume, and I assume that there's a way that we can select what's played.
And how long have you been playing these?
Off and on for a number of years. I've been there, as I said, just less than a year, and I know that they played off and on at different times.
And was there a purpose when they, I mean, what is the stated purpose?
Playing them?
Yeah.
For people's enjoyment and pleasure, I assume.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
And I am happy to look into those questions. I honestly don't know.
Reverend Anderson, I think the summary here would be that it'd be good to know, that you should know what the songs are that are being played. Good to hear the schedule clarified.
Yes.
I know there are special occasions. I've heard them played on, you know, national holidays.
Sure.
And having been part of that church many, many years ago, my recollection is that it was just special occasions.
I don't know.
So it'd be good to know the full history here.
Sure.
It seems that the folks in the neighborhood are saying this is a new occurrence on the schedule.
Okay, I don't know.
Other questions? Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
We'll work, this is discussion item, and we'll discuss it here with our city attorney a little bit, and we need the full counsel here anyway, so--
Okay.
--I assume this is going to take a little bit of time.
Thank you. Thank you so much.
So Jim, I'm going to put you on the spot. I don't, I don't have my laptop up and queued to our discussions at various times. Are you, at this time, prepared to talk about why you interpreted our noise ordinance as already applying to the chimes? Or you think they're, they currently apply to the chimes?
I think that the ordinance does apply to the chimes. I realize there is the exception, but I think a rational analysis of that exception and application of that section would be consistent with reasonable limitations on noise. Otherwise, a carillon or a bell tower or a clock tower that emits a loud sound could chime out at 150 decibels if it chooses to do that, to cover the entire city 24/7 if it's an absolute blanket exception. I do think it would be appropriate to better put citizens in Urbana on clearer notice to clarify the ordinance. So I certainly would agree that clarification, but I do think that the ordinance is drafted is applicable. Not easy to apply because obviously you're balancing First Amendment rights and the Establishment Clause as well.
Questions, mayor.
Well, there are some religions where someone calls several times a day, a person is singing to bring people to a mosque. So in that case, you know, that's real, a conflict between the religion and the noise ordinance.
Yes. I mean, that's part of the problem. I think Alderman Smythe is suggesting that an exception would be clearly articulated for calling people to worship. And I don't recall the title of the individual who calls from the minaret. I want to say musing or something like that, but that's a call to worship, as I understand.
Eric.
I think all of this reinforces me in thinking that we ought to reason together and believe that all the parties in this case are acting in good faith, and let's figure out how to, you know, reconcile everybody's needs and wishes as best as possible. I mean, nobody's going to get everything they want, but as best as possible.
Well, I personally like to send this to staff, particularly to work around something like my very last statement here, which is something like, "Timekeeping purposes, calls to worship, or for special performances up to 15 minutes twice daily on national holidays," and let them work on that and see what they come up with. Mayor.
I agree with Eric that it's a question of talking with people about this, and I think the minister is going to do some research, so I don't know if it's going to require a legal change or not, but I think we should talk with him first.
Personally, I think we need to start, we need to clarify the ordinance, because I think, you know, as Mr. Simon has indicated, it probably applies, but it's a little, it's a little iffy in places, and we have too much noise. You know, my own sentiment is that we have too much noise out there as it is, and we should intrude on people's lives as little as possible.
I think really clear laws facilitate good conversation.
What is the committee's pleasure here? I've suggested a path, and the mayor has suggested making sure we have conversation around that path.
I think we're in violent agreement. I think we should, I think we should have these conversations, and in parallel with that, if there is some way to clarify the ordinance so that the possibility of conflict in the future is reduced, then let's do that.
Diane.
And I want to make sure we find out what the options are for the particular bell tower that's in question, too, as far as volume and types of songs and that sort of thing.
We have Reverend Anderson's contact information here--
Okay.
--which I'll share with Jim and others, and we can go from there. We'll let Jim cogitate on this a little bit, like he needs more work. Diane?
The clock tower, the courthouse clock tower is one of the exceptions, correct? That's timekeeping, so this is not a problem.
Yeah, right, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, I'm very interested in keeping us moving quickly tonight, so, yes, ma'am. It's just a, it's just a direction to staff, direction to staff, yeah, to keep work, to work on this. This is very beginning of the discussion.
Charlie?
Yes, mayor.
I'll talk to the minister first, okay?
Okay. Okay, staff report. Anything? Okay, we have one staff item. Matt, Regic?
Just want to share real quickly that we would like to request that two of the resolutions be taken out from the agenda, one of them being Resolution 2016-06-044-R, Resolution approving a CBBG infrastructure agreement between City of Urbana and Highland Green LLC, and Ordinance Number 2016-06-052, Ordinance authorizing the sale of certain real estate, 401-403 East Kerr Avenue. In discussion with Highland Green developers and the attorney, we just thought at this time, we want to give them more time to think about this and push those items closer to the actual anticipated closing date of the development. So with that in mind, we're going to, we anticipate bringing those back either late July or in August sometime.
Okay, so postponed.
Yep.
Thank you. Those items 12 and 15 on the agenda. Yes, ma'am.
Staff report from the mayor?
Yes.
I just got back from Indianapolis. We had U.S. Conference of Mayors meeting there, which was very informative. A lot of very important issues discussed, including Boston having a person for, or maybe a whole staff for drug issues, trying to improve the situation for the public health epidemic that we're facing. But also, two cities. Louisville, Kentucky is calling itself a city of compassion, and Anaheim, California is calling itself a city of kindness. And this is just a movement to try to get more public involvement in treating people better, getting people to know each other, and they have specific goals set for schools on acts of kindness, and they all got it done. I don't know if they had a million or whatever they had, but it's a bigger city than we are, so I think it's something that we should talk about and see if we'd like to be that. Urbana, the city of kindness, would you like that? I'd like to put that on a future agenda after I hear from the council members.
Better than the city of--
That's right. But, I mean, other cities are actually doing specific actions to get people kind of focused on what we can do to create a more healthy environment for people.
Brendan Boyce.
The May Business and Development Report was in last week's packet, but I thought I'd touch on some of the highlights. The Central Area TIF will have the public hearing on July 11. The Joint Review Board meeting was held on June 15, and the resolution was unanimously approved recommending the new TIF to the city council, and we'll bring the details of that forward at a later time. Historic Preservation Month had a lot of good activities, including a staff-led bike tour, two walking tours with over 40 to 50 people attending, so a lot of good proactive activity in historic preservation in the last month. The Urbana Uncork Wine Festival was held on June 18. That was just this past Saturday. By all accounts, a very good event with a strong turnout. We'll have numbers at a future meeting and a future report. The mayor cut a ribbon for Cunningham Avenue improvements, which was also the subject of the area update of the month, in this report for the sidewalk improvements, which also included multiple curb closures along North Cunningham Avenue. And this, one thing that's exciting about these improvements that was mentioned in the report is that they set the stage for potential extension of that pedestrian infrastructure north under Interstate 74, potentially connecting all the way up to O'Brien Drive. So these improvements not only are great for the businesses there on North Cunningham, but create a logical stepping stone for future improvements. For projects not included in the report is that New Med RX, Medical Cannabis Dispensary that was awarded the second license for our state police district, has submitted plans. It was reported in the media. Also, we have a new business opening up in Colab at 206-- Also, we have a new business opening up in Colab at 206 West Main Street prelim. They develop software for housing, for Realtor services online. They used to be in Research Park and have now relocated to our downtown. 25O' Brewery is the name of the brewery that is planning to go into 208 West Griggs. This space is the large blue wall at the western edge of the Boneyard Creek Improvement Area that overlooks the Boneyard, and one concept that's being pursued by the business owner and the property owner would be that the, that western facade facing the Boneyard would be the main entrance to the business, and that outdoor seating would then be allowed on the public sidewalks there. So it would create a very vibrant atmosphere, similar to what we have at Silver Creek already. So that is underway. Starbucks at 701 South Gregory, so I believe that's the last major space in Gregory Place. That's Gregory Place West, I believe. So they've been very successful in getting major brands in Gregory Place, JSM has, and this really tops that off. Burger King has submitted plans for just next to our campus circle development on University Avenue, so the former, oh, I think it was Don Juan's Mexican Restaurant most recently. There were a few different owners of the Mexican restaurant, but that's the site that that will be going into. And a couple others mentioned in the newspaper, Meyer Curbside Pickup. Meyer is expanding their services in Southeast Urbana. And Griggs Beer Distribution, which we've mentioned before, they are nearing completion of their project in Southeast Urbana. So just a lot of good things happening this construction season. Any questions?
Aaron.
So the Numedex, is there a location that they're looking at and anything like that?
Yes, they, they actually, all the applicants for the licenses had to identify locations. I think it was over a year ago at this point. And so staff, particularly planning staff, were supportive of those businesses in trying to meet all the requirements imposed by the state because there were a lot of restrictions as to where you could locate. And I think that resulted in about four locations, and so the location Numed chose is the former Hueys, the old blockbuster, at the southwest corner of Five Points. And so that remains the location that they're interested in. Again, there's very few options to locate these, and they're looking to make a substantial investment in the property, simply to come into compliance with the requirements of the state regulations for the operation of such a facility. It will require security systems that are really on par or exceed the standards that you'd find in a commercial bank.
And what about the TIF meeting, the July 11th TIF meeting, is that what time?
That will be at the regularly scheduled City Council meeting, 7:00 p.m. There'll be a public hearing at the start of that meeting.
All right, thank you.
Diane?
Have you had any feedback from developers regarding the effect of the enterprise zone on new construction in our subdivisions?
I mean, anecdotally, we've heard a lot of reports of lot sales, of, you know, optimism in the marketplace, but we don't have numbers to show you at this time. But I think we're hearing good signs, we're hearing positive remarks from Realtors and developers.
Is that something you plan to track?
Oh, absolutely, yes.
So do you have an idea when you'll have some numbers?
I mean, we can do an analysis as we get towards the end of the current season. We know there's several permits that have been filed for, and they don't have to happen, you know, and you don't have to apply for the incentive right away. So I think we allow 90 days after the application for the permit for the home, so we won't entirely know who's in the program until probably later in the fall. As we get going with the program, then, in subsequent years, we'll be able to also report on who's actually enrolled in the abatement program and how much is being abated as well. But because of the time delay that happens between construction assessment and that value showing up on the tax rolls, it'll be a while before we can report those numbers as well.
Looking forward to when it makes sense to report it, yeah.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Eric?
So although it's about the economic development issues, it's a question to Mr. Simon. When we do finally vote on establishing a TIF district, will we be functioning in a legislative or an adjudicatory function?
When you adopt a TIF district, you would be functioning in a legislative capacity. You will not be adjudicating a particular party's rights or remedies.
And then I have a quick question. Uncle Martin's Sports Bar, you said that the building's been sold, or do you know what's going on?
I haven't, I haven't found out the details there yet, but I look forward to finding out more.
Okay, so we expect another business is moving in or something, then?
Yeah, ideally. I mean, my understanding, it was a fairly successful restaurant, so I think a better option came along.
Have we reached out to the owner of Uncle Martin's to find him another location?
I believe that is who we're trying to communicate with right now, so, yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you. Next up is Resolution Number 2016-641-R, Resolution to approve an amendment to the intergovernmental agreement, the Tiger Six Grant Champagne-Urbana Multi-Modal Corridor Enhancement Amendment Number Two to the Intergovernmental Agreement for Amcor Project, Bill Gray from Public Works.
Thank you. Very brief, the federal highway had found that there was a greater than 80% funding of federal funds to match the local funds for Projects Two and Three, which is a joint project package for the letting later in July. We had to make some dollar adjustments, and we took MTD-funded money for our Project One and shifted it to Project Two and Three in the exact dollar amount of federal funds for Projects Two and Three went to Project One. So that's what the table on the last page reflects, that change of $2 billion swap between those two projects, and that is the only change in the intergovernmental agreement, and it takes council action and ordinance to make resolution for that to happen.
Questions? Motion to send to council.
I move to send to council with recommendation for approval.
Second?
Move by Eric, second by Diane, to send to council. Any further discussion? Singing down all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. To council it goes. Next up is Resolution 2016-642-R, Resolution approving intergovernmental agreement, the JAG grant of the City of Urbana, City of Champagne, and Champagne County. And our Chief of Police, Pat Connolly. My apologies, my allergies are bothering me tonight.
Good evening, everybody. In February 2015, the Urbana City Council will approve the purchase of six tasers for the police department. After extensive training, six crisis intervention team officers began carrying the tool, and since that time, we've expanded our CIT cadre from 17 officers to 28 officers. Unfortunately, our mental health-related calls have also gone up a great deal since that time. Since the taser program was implemented, we've displayed, which means pointed it at someone, the device nine times. Police discharged the taser twice during that time period, but the event that took place in late April 2016 is still pending in the court, the criminal court here, so I can be very generic and share just a little bit about what that entailed. An individual, we later identified, an individual who concerned a quantity of liseric acid diethylamide, that's LSD, a hallucinogenic drug. He broke into a vacant apartment, removed all of his clothing, and then began to damage the interior of the apartment. He, at one point, grabbed a large metal pole, broke several windows, and then charged a group of police officers that were positioned outside the apartment. Fortunately, he came out the door where the only taser for the Urbana Police Department was positioned. We were able to discharge the taser, get him into custody, and get him into medical treatment immediately. The first actual discharge of the taser occurred on May 15th, 2015. An individual ingested a quantity of drugs, threatened to hurt himself by way of cutting his wrists with a knife. He then began punching windows in an effort to try to gain entry into some apartments. For several hours, crisis intervention team officers and a crisis negotiator actually spoke with him, but he continued cutting himself with the wrists and holding the officers at bay with the knife. Two hours into the event, he abruptly tried to climb over an enclosed fire escape, and unfortunately, the only Urbana police officer with the taser was positioned on the opposite side of the complex. However, there was a county deputy who was present, and he was able to discharge the taser, and we were able to get him into custody and get medical treatment for him as well. With the exception of the county case, the Civilian Police Review Board has reviewed all of the videos and all of the police reports from those nine events, and they've reported that they had no recommendations or changes at all to the policy. In case anybody's interested in the policy or the summary of those events, those are all posted on the Civilian Police Review Board website. Because we have such a limited number of CITs with tasers available on the street, this year's JAG grant is planned to be used to rent to own eight additional tasers. In this, because we were able to lease these for a period of time, we're able to actually stretch the $11,000 in the JAG grant money to accommodate two years' worth of paying so that we will be able to continue to have the most important or expensive part of the taser itself is actually the camera, and we do have cameras on each one of the tasers. So by doing the math, and I provided you with that information that Lieutenant Searls researched, that information is available. That's the direction we'd like to go.
Questions for Chief Connolly?
Eric?
So I'm going to ask your opinion on a hypothetical, so it's a little bit hard to answer, but in your opinion, on those occasions when the taser was, a couple of times it was used, the other times when it was displayed, were those incidents resolved with less force than they would have been if the tasers had not been there?
Well, the taser was only discharged twice, and the answer in both those occasions is absolutely positively yes.
But in the other, in the other cases, depending on how the individual responded at whom the taser was pointed, the answer might be yes there. Was it still necessary after pointing the taser to, you know, take the person into custody by using some level of force, or was the person compliant?
No, actually, the taser, in most of the situations, the individual then complied with the officer, and we were able to get him into custody.
Eric?
So Chief, does the same amount of money come every year for the JAG grant?
No.
So can you give me an idea of how it fluctuates?
I have no idea. It's one year, it's $11,000, another year it could be $7,000. A couple years ago, I don't think it was any money for any of the agencies.
Okay, so have you, one of the things that Mr. Stone talked about earlier, things that I had also considered, have you thought about using that JAG money towards the body cams or any other ideas?
I don't know, Mr. Stone, but body cameras are at a minimum $89,000. The mayor gave us directions for the last six years that our budget would not be increased. No city funds have been used for that. No city book funds have been provided for increasing any of the police supply needs. The JAG grant is the only money that's available for us to be able to do that.
And so just one single camera is $89,000?
We can't buy one single camera. We have cameras on each of the tasers. You have to store the video, you have to process the video, so merely having a camera wouldn't suffice.
That's 40-some, how many cameras, if we were to buy body cams, how many cameras would it be?
I don't have the body camera information with me tonight. I know that the minimum cost, as we did research and develop, and which we are still doing, and again, if the city fines $89,000, I will get body cameras tomorrow.
So you said these are rent to own?
Correct.
So that just means that over the two-year period that you're renting them, you'll own them after the two years? Is that what that means?
I believe the total cost, and Lieutenant Searls may be able to better speak to that, I believe it's a total of five years before they're paid for.
So how much will it actually cost to actually pay for them over the five-year period? Because it says this is a two-year lease, is what?
Right, the two-year lease is $3,539. I'm assuming that, I don't know if the price is reduced after two years, that's all negotiated with the company that provides the taser.
So in essence, we're being asked to approve something for two years that's actually going to take five years?
That's correct. The money that we're providing, it only allows us to get a certain number of tasers. Now, we can buy them outright, but it's more, much more expensive, and we don't get as many tasers.
So, but I'm just trying to understand that if the proposal is for us to vote on something for a two-year span that takes five years, the impression that I think, as Mr. Stone even alluded to, is that this was, I don't know, after two years, you'd have to give them back or something?
If the JAG grant isn't available, that's correct. After two years, we have to give them back.
So you're counting on the grant after the two years to continue paying for that?
Unless the city's capable of providing money in the future.
So the, so was there any other thoughts given into like, I mean, you and I both know, we all know that there was a lot of attention around this purchase of the tasers, and the track record seems to be that they have not been used in any sort of abusive manner or anything like that, but it also doesn't support that we need five more or eight more of them at this particular point?
I would argue that it does. I would argue that the Civilian Police Review Board-
But you can get a chance to argue it, I just wanted to continue making my point, then you can have a chance to-
Oh, all right, I'm sorry. I thought you asked me a question and I was providing the answer.
No, I was just making the point. That, so from my perspective, it certainly does not warrant the purchase of more of them at this particular point. But given the context, this was, all this came about, right? And knowing the concerns that me and the community have about it, I was just wondering if there was something else that you considered or thought about doing that would increase transparency for those who are concerned about the use of tasers and the militarization of the police department, so to speak? How would you, you know, is there any discussion with other people who say, listen, here's an opportunity for us to do something. I know we had discussed through the Fresh Start Program, there are various different options that are available to put people on the street to help interrupt violence and things like that. We had discussed interrupters once before. Would you be open to the idea of giving a stipend to someone to work as an interrupter to interrupt some of the violence that we have on the streets as opposed to purchasing more tasers?
Which, I'm sorry, I don't know which part was your comment and which part is the question.
Well, usually when I say something that has a question mark at the end of it, that's the part, that's the question part to you. So let's not be contentious here. You understood my question?
No, sir, I didn't. But here's the reality, the reality is the Civilian Police Review Board-
Are you willing to use the money to pay somebody to do a stipend? I was very clear about that.
If that's the request, the answer is, I think tasers save lives, as evident by the two times, the two lives that were saved during the last year. I can tell you that the Civilian Police Review Board has done nothing but praise the efforts, and you can watch the video, praise the efforts and the actions of the Urbana Police for the incredible professionalism that they displayed during those 11 events. And my only concern is that there are not enough tasers on the street, and we actually have entire shifts that have no taser available to them. And since the city is providing no additional money to the police department, the only avenue we have to obtain this invaluable tool is through the JAG grant.
So your answer to my question, that would you be willing to put someone on the street to help interrupt the violence that everybody's complaining about is no.
I have been a part of the Fresh Start Initiative since its inception. I've shared countless hours working with the community, trying to develop that initiative, and as I understand it, we already have interrupters that are being presented on the street, and I am 100% in support of doing anything we can do to increase the opportunity for Fresh Start to be embedded in this community.
Except use JAG grants money for that?
Yeah.
Would that be, that's your position? So, I'm not done yet, Charlie, so just give me a second. No, I have the floor, and I'm still asking questions.
I was just going to ask you to make, to keep your questions going. Thank you.
I don't need any assistance with that, Charlie.
We have another question from the mayor as soon as you're done.
And her turn comes after mine, then, right?
Please proceed.
Thank you, Charlie. So the money that you're getting from the JAG grant, $11,000- So, the money that you're getting from the JAG grant, $11,000, after the two years, it would cost, you get the JAG money for every year, right?
I don't know, it's year to year.
So how are you proposing for two years if the money comes every year?
Because we're not spending the whole $11,000, we're encumbering that. And I did provide you with the packet, did you get an opportunity to read all that?
Yeah, I read through the packet, and that's a question that I do understand better now. So, but I do think it's misleading for you to portray it as that it's just a two-year lease program when you turn around and say that it's going to take five years to actually pay for it.
Okay, that's the money that we have available, enough for two years.
Okay. Thank you, I'm done now, Charlie.
Mayor.
We have, the police chief explained that we have trained officers in crisis intervention. And part of, we always want somebody who has a taser to be trained in that, so we have people that are trained, but we don't have the equipment. We have a lot of unmet needs like every other city. We're living in a state that doesn't even have a budget yet, so we try to do what we think is the top priority. And it was training people to be crisis intervention people. So, these are the officers that can go and talk with someone who's not really in their right mind and have some kind of a peaceful resolution. So, and we're cooperating with the other police departments, the City of Champaign and the county. And so, I think it's a perfectly reasonable way to do it, but I'm not saying that's all we have to do, but we have to get more money so we can do all the other things that we need to do.
Eric. I believe that the expenditure that you're asking for is very, very cost-effective means for violence reduction, violence preemption, and so I'll be supporting it.
Diane.
I move that we send Resolution Number 2016-06-042R to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second. It's been moved by Diane, seconded by Eric. I have one question, or one question and one suggestion here. I believe that this year, Mayor, Chief, we moved like $5,000 from Social Services into the actual police budget for the Community Coalition, is that correct? Or, Eric?
Well, it's my understanding that you didn't move money from Social Service funding, it was my understanding you took money from the police budget and appropriated it.
Just in the police budget, okay, okay. So, it's, we put $5,000, yeah, $5,000 is there for, that's my point. And my recollection is that all the JAG grants that we've had, this is like my 15th, given this is my 16th year on the council, I've seen a number of these, they've always been one-time purchases essentially, is that correct? So this leads me to my suggestion, it'd be good to see the breakdown, Lieutenant Searls has done on this, of how it's cost-effective to, you know, I know you're taking a chance here, you want to get eight, so you have a few more on the streets than just five. It'd be good to know what the actual total cost is across the time period, because maybe it makes more sense to find the money and just buy the eight outright, or supplement them in some fashion here to the JAG grant and just buy them outright instead of leasing, you know, if the rent to own is too expensive, I don't want to do it that way, I want to just buy them.
Got it.
So I want to see the rest of the numbers.
I will have that for you Monday.
Okay, thank you. All those, any other questions? All those in favor?
I do have a question.
Aaron?
When we're doing the committee of the whole, is it just simple voice vote, do you have, is there, can you request a roll call for a majority?
You can do it, however, if the majority, it actually shouldn't be any more than a voice vote, because you're discussing this, and you're sending it on for action, final action, which means you should take your roll call.
But if you do not have a majority to support it, then it cannot go on to council, is that correct? And it's majority of the entire council, not of those who are present, is that correct?
Majority of those that are present.
Okay.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, the ayes have it. Motion goes, or this resolution goes to council. Next up is related, item number 2016-649, an ordinance revising the annual budget ordinance for fiscal year 2016-17 for the JAG grant. Diane.
Move that we send ordinance number 2016-06-049 to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second. Moved by Diane, seconded by Eric. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, the ayes have it. You can record me as an aye. Next up is ordinance number 2016-650, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Three, Section 343, increasing the number of Class G2 liquor licenses for Lucky's Lounge LLC doing businesses Lucky's Lounge at 202 North Lincoln Avenue. Mayor?
Well, this is one of the sites that people said they thought was appropriate for a G2. We had some controversy over another request, but this is on North Lincoln Avenue, so we think it's a, you know, we check out the company, and we think they're going to do a good job, so that's why we're recommending it.
And both gentlemen are still here, representing them. Diane.
This is the gas station that's been vacant for years and years?
That's my understanding, yes. They're nodding their heads, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the applicants or the mayor? Is there a motion? Oh, Aaron.
So, the, yes, I would like to ask questions of the applicants.
If you guys could grab these seats up here, please.
And my apologies, I have misplaced your names here, or the mayor has them. Or no?
Oh, we do, from the hearing, okay.
Sean Freeman and Chris Shipman. Thank you.
Gentlemen, thank you for your interest in doing business in the City of Urbana, just had a few questions with, what exactly would you be opening there? What will it be?
It's a, it's going to be two-part business. It's going to be part of electronic cigarettes, vapors, it's going to be on one side of it. The other side is going to be a gaming, video poker house on the other side of it.
And were you the same, with this, you weren't the same group who were proposing at the video store on Fairview and Lincoln, were you?
No, sir.
Was that the same group? And do you have businesses, you have more here in Urbana?
I currently have businesses in Champaign, Rantoul, Effingham, and Danville. I don't have any in Urbana right now.
How many like stations or machines and stuff like that do you plan to have there?
The maximum is five machines that you can have.
And that's what you plan to have, is that the maximum?
Correct, correct.
And any of the other places that you have, do you have, do you have issues with the police or problems with any of the folks who come and do business there to play the video games?
I've never, this will be the first video gaming, but at my other stores, we've never had police, not one time at any of the stores.
But you don't have video gaming anyplace else?
Correct, correct.
That's all I have, I just wanted to try to get an idea of what it is. You said video, I mean not a video, but the vapors, cigarettes and stuff like that, the other stuff.
Correct.
So just all types of tobacco products?
No, just the electronic, no tobacco, just the vaping stuff.
Okay. Other questions? Diane.
I just want to clarify something. In item 11 on our agenda, the same address is given, but actually it's 2011.
It's 2011, yeah.
Yeah, okay. I have no questions.
Is there a motion?
I move to send to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
It's been moved by Eric, seconded by Diane. Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you, gentlemen, this goes to council next week, our next meeting.
Welcome to Urbana.
Thank you.
Okay, next up is ordinance number 2016-651, an ordinance amending Urbana City Code, Chapter Three, Section 343, increasing the number of Class C liquor licenses for Max Convenience Stores LLC and doing business as Circle K 1301 at 2011 North Lincoln Avenue. Mayor?
We found that this is a business that has not created any problems, and so that's why we're recommending that they get the Class C liquor license.
And we have our representative for Max here, too, if there are any questions. Diane.
Is this a change from a different type of liquor license or a new license?
I think, is it new ownership?
Hi, I'm Eva Thrasher, I work for Circle K. We currently have just a wine and beer license.
So it's expanding from a B to a C?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
Diane.
I'll move approval of ordinance number 2016-06-051-
Removed to council.
-to council with recommendation for approval.
I'll second that.
It's been moved by Diane, seconded by Eric. Aaron, you had a question?
Yeah, so I just want to make sure I'm understanding, you said you all, we currently, you currently sell, you said wine and beer?
Yes.
And this is being expanded to have more hard liquor?
Yes.
And we'll also have it right across the street at the gaming facility, right? Is that correct? Is that what was just approved or moved to council?
They have a G2 liquor license. Jim, can you clarify what G2 is allowed? I know they can do beer, wine.
G2 allows, if I am not mistaken, the sale or serving of all spirits in connection with a gaming hall.
But that's not for takeout, it's for consumption.
No, it's not.
It's for consumption in, yeah, so G2 is for consumption in, this is a license for takeout or packaged out and not for consumption in. Okay.
That's good. I'm sorry, would you say your name again, please?
Eva Thrasher.
Eva, and so Eva, you own the facility?
No, I'm actually a market manager for 11 of the locations in town.
And the, I would imagine, but I'll just ask anyway, that the rationale for this is just purely a profit motivation?
Yes, we have several customers that come in and will leave once they realize that we don't sell the hard liquor.
And you don't work in the facility, though?
Not just the one, no, sir.
Because, I mean, my constituents have an increasing concern about liquor and all that kind of stuff, and the access, the easy access to it, and are very comfortable with the way things are right now, so I'm concerned about increasing this to have a hard liquor, because that just makes it more accessible for folks to access it as opposed to traveling somewhat of a distance. But I understand it's not that hard to get, but I just wanted to raise the concern that I have been approached by a couple of people who are concerned about increasing for the harder liquors in our area.
Eric. What is the, roughly, the fraction of your business that comes from town as opposed to, from the hotels in that area as opposed to the interstate? I mean, I looked at your location, and I thought, oh, well, a lot of that is, you know, there are a lot closer liquor stores to most people in town than to drive up to the interstate. And so my thought was that you were probably serving mostly transient people who are visiting, but maybe I'm wrong, but do you have those numbers?
We have, a lot of our base is from, we do, at that location is from the hotels. And it's easy, they can walk right over to our location and then right back to their hotel. There's four hotels right there around us.
Other questions? We have a motion, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Nay.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so, item 12 is postponed. Item 13 is ordinance number 2016-653, an ordinance approving an amendment to redevelopment agreement by and between City of Urbana, Champaign County, Illinois, and 129 North Race LLC in connection with the redevelopment project area number two. Brendan Boyce.
So this agreement was originally approved on February 16th of 2015. 129 North Race LLC is a partnership of Chen Shi Yu, Dustin Kelly, and Matt Cho. The project, which is currently underway, is the renovation of 129 North Race Street. The first major tenant would be Cherry Tree Cafe. The project is not expected to be completed by the original deadline in the agreement, which was June 30th, 2016. And as such, the ordinance, under consideration, would give the mayor the authority to execute a very narrow amendment of the agreement to literally strike out the date, June 30th, 2016, and insert the date, June 30th, 2017. The developer has communicated they expect they would be completed with the project as envisioned in the original agreement by the end of the calendar year. However, staff feel it's always prudent to provide additional time. Renovations of historic properties often are subject to delay, and this would also coincide with the end of our fiscal year, so it's a, it's a simple, or it's a logical amendment. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions for Brendan. Is there a motion?
I move approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved to send to council with a recommendation for approval, I take it.
That's exactly what I meant, yes, thank you.
And seconded by Diane. Any further discussion? Seeing, oh, Diane.
What's the seating for the Cherry Tree Cafe? How many, what's the square footage or what's the seating expected to be? Any idea?
I actually, I don't know. I'm sure our building inspector or building safety manager could answer that based on their recent issuance of the permit. I could follow up with you on that.
Okay.
I do know, though, it's, when you look at the building from Race Street, you can see that there's a portion of it where they're adding in a new facade, that's the newer addition to the building. It'll be, it'll actually extend into the more historic portion of the building as well, where you don't see the facade, so it'll be the whole, the whole frontage of the building, basically, will be their cafe.
So the cafe and the museum take up the first floor?
No, I believe there's an additional retail space at the back, so there, we do expect there will be additional tenants. But the Urbana Museum of Photography is the other tenant that is in the process of moving in, I believe. And they've been in downtown Urbana at another location in the past, so.
It's a fairly deep building, too, right? It's deeper than it looks.
Yeah.
Yeah, I toured it with Matt a while back, and the tenants that were on the second floor apparently didn't want renovations done, and so they were using it as is. Is that still the case?
I am not certain of that.
I guess I'll just go visit it again.
Yeah.
All right, thanks.
I'm sure Matt would be glad to give you a tour. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That motion carries. Let's see, that was item 13. We're on items 14 now, is, oh, let's see, yeah, 14, a resolution approving a home developer agreement. Is that one also postponed or not? No, that one is on here, okay. Okay, so Resolution 2016-643R, resolution approving a home developer agreement between the Urbana Home Consortium and Highland Green LLC. And we have Matt, Kelly, and?
And with us here tonight is Chris Black from Bringsure Development, member of the development team. Yeah, just to follow up, the home agreement dedicates $291,580 to Highland Green LLC for the provision of affordable housing. This agreement was originally brought to committee of the whole at the last meeting and was continued to provide more time to finalize the legal documents, and that process has been going very well. We've been in communication with the developer, the developer's attorney, and we should be able to have a final document ready for final approval on next Monday night at the council meeting. And this will also help us to meet our July 31st deadline for the commitment of home funds. This will actually be a very important step towards meeting that goal. And as I mentioned, tonight with us is Chris Black. If you have any questions, he's certainly here to answer anything that, answering questions that he might have.
So, Chris, you are the developer, you work for the developer, you are the-
Oh, no, I'd have a much nicer car if I was the developer. I work for the developer, yeah.
Okay. And so, on a project like this, do you all have workforce goals or diversity goals that you implement on a project like this?
We do on many of the projects that we work on, particularly in the City of Chicago. We, we do on many of the projects that we work on, particularly in the City of Chicago, we don't have any on this particular goal, although, you know, local hiring of subcontract, you're talking about the construction of the project.
Construction, the, the contractors as well as the workforce?
Yeah, I mean, the workforce for the, the project will be, will be utilizing existing management personnel that are already working on Crystal View and Douglas Square, which are two other properties that we have in town, in the neighborhood, but from a construction standpoint, yeah, we, we, our GC, our general contractor endeavors to hire local people all the time, just 'cause from any number of standpoints, it makes sense.
So I understand hiring local, that's one of the questions, is this a project labor agreement project, and will be, will you use the local labor unions, or will this be non-labor, non-union?
It's, we are going to be subject to Davis Bacon, so, which is typically union labor. The Davis Bacon requirements provide a cost standard for the, the payment of the, the laborers, whether they be whatever trade, so we will, we will be subject to Davis Bacon requirements in conjunction with the home funds specifically, on this project, yes.
So you said in Chicago and other places, you all are, you're accustomed to working with different, basically, MBE goals, minority and women business, and veteran-owned businesses, those types of goals?
Yes.
Right, but you don't necessarily have them, when you come to a project, someone has to basically ask you to set those particular goals, is that how that works?
Yes, they're imposed, usually, typically.
Okay.
I think Kelly was gonna.
I did also wanna note that, anytime you have a certain amount of federal funds, Section Three may apply, so that may be something that may apply for this project, and that is definitely looking at the neighborhood and hiring workers for the neighborhood, so that is something that we will certainly check to see if the dollar amounts that we put in will meet that threshold.
And this project is going to be roughly how much?
The entire development cost?
Yeah.
Eight million, I think is, I think that's what we were.
Seven point five, eight million.
Seven, yes.
So?
I apologize for not knowing the exact number.
No, no, I'm just asking questions, because some of these questions I've asked numerous times to other developers and other staff members, and I continue to have to ask the same questions about diversity goals, so I just figured I would ask them now, about, you know, if there were any that, was it Brendan or anybody else who approached you and said, hey, these are some of the goals we'd like to set for diversity in this particular project, because this has been a constant conversation for, for me, that I've brought to the council over and over again, about diversity in the City of Abana, doing business with minority-owned contractors or hiring people, so that they, the workforce will be diverse. So I just wanna raise this publicly once again, that there needs to be some sort of approach by staff and by the City of Abana to incoming developers who we certainly appreciate, but as I keep saying, most developers, like yourself or others, who have been doing this type of work all over the place, you have no problem trying to meet those particular goals if they are indeed asked of you, so I'm just putting it forward so that we can continue to ask that question.
Okay.
So, thank you very much for answering the question, I appreciate it.
And I've asked Kelly to dig out the records from Crystal View related to that, because we, you know, this Brin Shore did, did that development, and I recall visiting the site and, at different times, and participating in the groundbreaking, so, and then the opening, the dedication afterwards, so, they, they do have a known track record.
And then this project, you know, although it's not named Phase Two, it essentially serves as a second phase of Crystal View, because it's directly next to it, so, yeah.
Yeah, I, I, my only wish here, and, and since Bill Brown is not here, something I think he, he wanted to express was at least a walking connection through, I think he brought that up with you, right, correct, Matt? I don't know if you've shared that with, with Brin Shore and so on.
We're designing that.
Yeah, you're designing that, okay, great, great, yeah, yeah, the inter.
Which, which is not terribly easy, not, not, you don't have to play any violins, but, you know, the slope of the site is such that it's been a little bit of a challenge, but we're, we're doing it.
Okay, great, thank you.
Yeah.
Other questions? Okay, is there a motion? Diane.
Move that we send resolution number 2016-06-043R to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second. It's been moved by Diane, seconded by Eric, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Now, I will point out that the paperwork includes both this resolution 43R, and I think it also has 44R, which we're postponing, is that correct? Or is that the?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, yeah, so, hold on to this, and we'll see part two later, I assume.
That's correct.
And then, so that goes to council, and then, item number 16 is resolution 2016-645R, a resolution assigning and amending an Urbana Home Consortium tenant-based rental assistance program agreement with Community Elements, TBRA. Is that?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, that's tenant-based rental assistance, that was also brought to the previous committee of the whole meeting, simply because the agreement is expiring, and we wanted to amend it to make sure that it does, that we're able to continue serving Community Elements, and also, as it was brought to our attention, that the agency is merging with Rosecrance Incorporated, so we wanted to make sure that legally the document was still sufficient and able to serve its function and be assigned to Rosecrance, the new entity, and we just needed more time to get the assignment language in there, that's been put in, and we anticipate bringing that before council.
Is there, are there any questions, Matt or Kelly, on this one? Is there a motion?
I move to send to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Moved by Eric, seconded by Diane. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that motion carries, and, oh, I guess this other one involves you, too, okay, so I see Highland Green, okay. Last item is resolution number 2016-646R, a resolution approving modifications to the City of Abana and Urbana Home Consortium, fiscal year 2013-14, 14-15, annual action plans, this is related to Highland Green also. Kelly?
I'll be in charge of this one, yes, so, basically, this resolution is asking to approve modifications to our annual action plans for fiscal year 13-14 and 14-15. What we're going to do is, we're proposing to amend the home budget in the fiscal year 13-14 and 14-15 annual action plan, and the CDBG budget in fiscal year 14-15, to provide additional funds for the Highland Green project, these are carryover funds that we have found from those years, so, and in the memo, it shows specifically the information regarding what those changes are and carryover from, so, what we're doing is recommending that it be forwarded to council for approval, and if you have any questions, let me know.
Questions for Kelly? A quick one here for you, Kelly, this is money that was sort of squirreled away for this project, is that correct?
Well, actually, it was, it was kind of in a nutshell, when you have program income, which we get from a project that comes back to us, you have to use that first, so, we had all this program income we used first, which then freed up entitlement money, which we didn't spend, so, in order to make sure that we, particularly with our home funds, that we made a commitment, that's what we're using this for.
Okay, got it. Diane.
I move we send resolution number 2016-06-046R to council with a recommendation for approval.
Second.
Moved by Diane, seconded by Eric, further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, that motion carries, that goes to council as well. Is there any further discuss, items here? Seeing none, we are adjourned. Thank you very much.